I'd like to call the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five City of LaPorte Common Council Meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Morrell, would you lead us, please?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Morrell. And I'm just not sure, as we look at council, does anybody have Mr. Morrell for government as they went through high school? Yeah, pretty cool. Yes. Okay, roll call, Clerk Treasurer Parthune.
Councilman Frankie.
Here.
Councilwoman Huffman.
Here.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman Kaneshny.
Present.
Councilman Buchanan.
Here.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Approval of September second, two thousand and twenty-five, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Before we move on then to petitions and comments of citizens, I would like to take a moment, if we could have a moment of silence for those that have lost their life over the last couple of weeks as we as a nation are faced with all the unnecessary violence that's happened across the nation. So if we could take a moment of silence for all that have suffered or lost their life during this time. Thank you. And I hope we can all focus together at when we disagree, stop the hate, we can all do better, stop the hate, don't go to social media and attack personally, but focus on the issues and hopefully meet eyeball to eyeball to discuss the concerns and the topics if we really want to find true solutions. Petitions and comments of citizens, I'll begin, and please state your name and address for the record. And this is three minutes of comments because this is not a public meeting, but a meeting held in public, and no personal attacks, and please be specific to your topic. Rick Ogle, welcome.
Good evening. Rick Ogle, nineteen oh two Indiana Ave. Painting. I've noticed that the intersections and crosswalks are in LaPorte are not all being painted, and I'm hoping that the street department will allocate as much for painting for next year as they have for tree removal this year. And speeding on Indiana Ave. I have checkered flags that I want to put out now because even though the street is closed for local traffic only, motorcycles go sixty, seventy miles an hour past my house coming from Marion Street going north. Yeah, they can get up that fast, that quick. The only good thing right now is the semis can't go that fast because they're not getting on the street. And I was in a meeting and I was told that the city and INDOT would try to get a, some kind of a speed limit sign to go at the intersection of Hathaway and Indiana because they would not agree to a bump out. And I sort of like to know if anything has been done with that.
And you're saying a, just a speed limit sign?
That was the discussion that I was, that I had.
It was a digital traffic.
Okay.
Speed.
And if the digital goes higher than, let's say forty miles an hour, people are going to see how fast they can go. We all know that.
Yes.
So that thought occurred to me. My three minutes up? Okay, see you.
But thank you. And just as an FYI, the crosswalks, the painting, we'd love to see that happen. When this administration took over, we had, I think, four hundred trees that have to be taken down. Our team is limited with everything else, but if there's a specific crosswalk, because we definitely want to make sure, and that's a priority, so, as well, if there's one specific area.
The digital sign was presented to INDOT. It'll be after the project's done, but they've not, as far as I know, said yes or no that they were willing to do it, but it's been presented to them.
We can follow that up because, again, I've seen firsthand as well, the speeders that are, you know, it's, it's pretty quick going up and down Indiana Ave. So, thank you, Rick. Sierra Sue Jesch, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sierra Sue Jesch, and I live on Jefferson Avenue. As I stand here right now, I see seven council members plus the mayor. But if you check with the police station right now, there are only three road officers plus a shift captain. Once in a while, we may get lucky and have another officer. But the thing is, we don't have enough police. We haven't had a power shift in twenty years. If you don't know what that is, it's a shift that starts midway between another shift and goes past the other shift, out when the most of the incidents has happened. I remember a friend of mine, who's retired thankfully, so he won't get in any trouble, that he told me, as captain of the second shift, a lot of times, they had more calls in one shift than the first and third shifts had combined. I mean, the city has annexed several areas in the last few years. You're planning to build lots of housing. You're talking about annexing more, but you're not adding more police officers. Now, how do you expect three officers on the road to cover the whole city? And if an officer is called to a domestic violence, two officers have to go for the safety of the officers. So that leaves maybe one officer and the captain, if he's out, he or she is out on the road to protect the rest of the city. I mean, we have added, I don't know how many pencil pushers to this city hall. That's why we lost our power shift. That particular mayor wanted more people in the office and eliminated four officers. We have done nothing about getting more officers. You just put through the last time or the time before, you know, new fines. I agree with it for more equipment for the police. But let's not take the line office out of the general budget that would go regularly to these items and put it somewhere else for one of your foo-foos. Let's put it in the more police officers and more protection for the people in town.
Absolutely. We couldn't agree. And thank you, Sue. And since this administration has taken over, do you remember what the budget was when we took over and where it is today?
I.
I hate to put you on the spot, but that number has.
I don't. I mean, I have it on my computer because we talk about it every year. I should memorize it by now.
That police budget, as fire budget, has continued to go up. When is the last time the City of LaPorte has had forty-four officers? And Ms. Chawaka brings up a great point, and we've brought this up. If we want these officers under the current number, the police department has an opportunity for twelve-hour shifts. Like many other cities, Sue, you have not mentioned the twelve-hour shift program. If that's what you want to see, to have more officers, we'd have many more officers in the field, on the city, but you'll have to, whoever you're sharing this information from or receiving this information from, that could help solve one of the problems right now, and I'm sure you will be one to stand for that and support that. Because we have grown the city budget, we've grown.
It's over ten million dollars.
Officers, yes, absolutely. So the pencil pushers, I think we've become more efficient. We're continuing. In fact, Courtney and our HR Director are evaluating efficiencies throughout the city on individuals, how much time are they spending from the police department to the fire department, to water, wastewater. But let's not forget, you also want lower property taxes. You have said on several occasions, you want reductions. You can't afford it. The state is listening to you. They've reduced property taxes, and that's to your advantage, and I'm full supportive of it. But with that comes reduced fees and reduced dollars. Before this year's reduction, the city has not reduced services, yet had our budget cut by revenues by thirty percent, thirty percent. And they still want roads, they still want sidewalks, still want water, still want wastewater, and we will continue to provide that. So we have to be open to new ways to do things, and I look forward to hearing more about that. So, thank you.
I did, I did work with Chief Dragmeister on a grant for, a federal grant for five additional officers. We'll see if we get it. It would be awesome. But to the mayor's point, you know, the state has taken away quite a bit of money from us, so without finding where we can find new money to fund that, it's difficult, but fingers are crossed on that grant.
And the cops grant, we'll know by the end of September, we'll know by the, but we're still going to have to come up with potentially thirty percent.
Local match and.
Local match.
Equipment and cars and everything that comes along with it.
So. Besides the wonderful mural that many people are calling, calling city hall, so thank you. It looks amazing.
There's a little four-year-old girl who comes to see, she has to pet the turtle and the frog every day. That's very cool, so.
Have you named the frog?
We have not named the frog yet. The turtle is Victor, because that's all he wanted, was the turtle. So my husband got the turtle, but we've not named the frog yet. But I'm here to talk about fun stuff. So the Spooktacular, everybody's all serious today.
Naming a frog is fun.
The Spooktacular is October eleventh, from eleven to one, so two hours. If anybody wants to participate, please reach out to Jessica Granger at Tody's. She is the one that's keeping the list of the businesses. We hope to have a hay maze. We're waiting for confirmation for the straw maze, sorry. We're waiting for confirmation of whether we're going to be able to get the straw or not. So very excited about that. And just so you know, in December, the Small Business Coalition took over the Cookie Walk from the city, and we're very excited. The tins have been, we're ready to order the tins. That will be December thirteenth, also from eleven to one. And again, any business, anybody who wants to participate, reach out to Jessica. We'll find you a spot, and we'll, you want to hand out cookies, absolutely, come hand out cookies. We're all for that. So happy to answer any questions you may have, but that's all. Just fun stuff for me.
Thank you. Kyle Cashmere. And I'm going to say, our unbelievable golf pro at Beechwood, and to see what you've done in the last, really, five years has been amazing, and how many people are really enjoying Beechwood, the ninth best public course in the state. So thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Cashmere, Beechwood Golf Course. I'm just here to advocate for the Beechwood Lakes rezoning. We're excited about the synergy that the neighborhood will have with the golf course, the possibility for potential trail, cart path to link the neighborhood with the course, new potential members, revenues. I know quite a few of our members, especially the retirees, are asking a lot of questions about the type of housing and the ability for them to downsize, so just want to lend my support.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Also, I think we have some comments online.
I think you said one kind of went from Dustin Johnson about speed.
Speed signs on Crescent Avenue, which I know is a, now a main thoroughfare since Indiana Ave is.
Is that on the other side of Southmore or at the end of Southmore?
It's, it's kind of shoots off like a crescent from Kingsbury Avenue.
I had talked to Jeff Bachelor about that. He said that they were going to put some on an existing pole.
Definitely, I think, can take a look at it. Appreciate what the street department did on Fox and Kingsbury there. So it's difficult to anticipate at the beginning of a construction project, I think, where all the traffic's going to go, but obviously, there's a lot on Crescent, Kingsbury area.
And the nice thing about the Fox three stop signs is that the residents were involved in that process. They were the ones that have lived on Fox for years, and they live on Fox because they didn't want to deal with a lot of, a lot of traffic. And because of the detour, because of Indiana Ave, they're having to deal with quite a bit now of traffic. And they helped our engineering, our street department, come up with the concepts, and it has completely slowed down the speed, the traffic on Kingsbury, Fox, and Southmore. So we're probably going to have to slow down. Also, the school system asked for us to reconsider a bump, bump at Riley School because we've had a, oh, what do we call them across, walking the kids across?
Crossing guard.
Crossing guard. We've already had a couple be put in danger with cars speeding by. So they worked together to make a softer angle at Riley School. I appreciate, I thank the Traffic Commission for working on that.
It's a speed cushion.
Speed cushion.
Is what we're calling it. It's not a speed bump. They're calling it a speed cushion because it is less aggressive than the bumps that were out there, so.
And I would also ask, just, I know you're going to consider it in the future, but the A Street parking, I'm seeing high school kids come up on their phone, and they shouldn't be, but almost have hit parked cars on A Street. I know it's been turned down in the past, but I would just ask to review that again because we're seeing cars swing out at the last minute, and it's, someone's going to run right into the back of those. So any other comments?
Nope, that's it.
Standing Committee reports. Council President Frankie.
I'll be quick. Redevelopment Commission meets next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, five fifteen, here in Council Chambers. Councilman Buchanan, Councilwoman Kaneshny, and I have been enjoying budget meetings quite a bit, and we have one more to go, and we should be wrapping up.
Councilwoman Huffman.
The Sustainability Commission will meet next Tuesday, September twenty-third, at four PM in Council Chambers.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board meets this Wednesday, September seventeenth, four PM at the Park Office, and then Traffic Commission has their next meeting on Tuesday, October seventh, five PM at the police station.
Councilman Galloway.
Police Merit Commission met last Tuesday on the ninth. Tim already stole one of my lines here, footing in for a grant for manpower. And they're at full strength on paper, but I figured there's one or so in the academy, so that's all I got.
Councilwoman West.
Fire Merit Commission met on September third, and the performance ratings of all personnel started and will be completed by December. The oral interviews for promotional exams will be conducted on October twenty-second and twenty-third, and the next meeting will be October first at six-thirty at Fire Station Number One on Eighteenth Street. Bid Board met on September eighth, and the high schools building trade students will be making the new lids and slats for our downtown trash receptacles that have been damaged due to the wear and tear over the years, and our street department will paint and repair the ones that are missing. And our next meeting will be, for bid board, will be October fourteenth at five o'clock here in City Chambers. UEA met, this is something I wanted to report last time but didn't, met August twentieth, and the board reviewed and granted a ten-thousand-dollar request to assist with the interior rehabilitation project at Dunkin' Donuts. The board reviewed and granted a request by Jeff Bachelor, Director of Code, and used the remaining, for the remaining ten thousand dollars of a grant awarded by the UEA for a part-time dumpster monitor. This will finish out, and this will finish out the year of two thousand and twenty-five. And the ribbon cutting at the, for the mural on Charities Place, Hot Spat Cafe, went really well, and that was partially funded by the UEA as well. And the next meeting will be Wednesday, September seventeenth, at four o'clock in City Chambers.
Councilman Buchanan.
The Plan Commission met Tuesday, September ninth. The Commission heard comments and a presentation on a zone map change for the Beechwood Lakes Project, as well as the final petition for Phase Two of the Hunter Woods Project. Both were approved unanimously by the Plan Commission members. The Historic Preservation Commission is scheduled to meet tomorrow, September sixteenth, at five-thirty here in Council Chambers.
Councilwoman Kaneshny.
The Airport Authority, it was this very successful weekend celebrating the airfare this past weekend. The Huey three sixty-nine, which was the helicopter that most of you either saw or heard both Saturday and Sunday, with a lot of things going on in the nation, it might have been a little unnerving until you realized this helicopter was here for discovery flights. It was wildly popular and a lot of fun to be around. The next meeting for the Airport Authority will be October, Wednesday, October eighth, at five fifteen, where I'll have more metrics to share with you in regards to the success.
Thank you. It was interesting that I had a meeting today with the head of the library, Fonda Owens, and, you know, she's trying to maneuver what the future of libraries looks like based on the property tax reductions. And I reassured her, I know people in LaPorte believe libraries are very important to our community, and, you know, so they're evaluating what it looks like in two thousand and thirty. And I said, it might be different, it may not be countywide, it might be whatever we can do in the city. I think the city wants to, our residents know that libraries are important and are worth the two to three-hundred-dollar savings that come from the property tax relief. So we want, we'll fight for libraries. We want them here in the City of LaPorte, and I think it's important. And so, as we talk about that, Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, we have a proclamation that I would like former teacher Julie West to read, if you would. And let's honor that and make sure we do not forget what's important to our young people and adults.
Okay. So, whereas more than forty-three million Americans can't read or write at the most basic level, while sixty-two-point-seven million lack basic math skills, as well as the credentials and skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary education. And whereas every year, one in three young adults drops out of high school. And whereas American Action Forum estimates that America is short, an estimated seven-point-five million private sector workers across all skill levels. And whereas adult education programs contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along the continuum in their educational journey to achieve basic skills and get prepared for career in college. And whereas adult education programs in high schools and adult schools, community colleges, and community centers offers low-cost, high-value programs that upgrade the skill set of our citizens. And whereas our community, the City of LaPorte, celebrates Adult Education and Family Literacy Week as a proud participant in the National Educate and Elevate Campaign, which helps our citizens learn all about their adult education, options to attain their professional and personal goals. Now, therefore, I, but that's not me, Thomas P. Dermody, Mayor of the City of LaPorte, State of Indiana, declare the week of September fifteenth through the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Adult Literacy Week in LaPorte, and encourage our community to continue efforts to further, hmm, just a little typo, efforts to further opportunity for everyone. In witness whereof, I hereby hand to set my hand and greet the Seal of the City of LaPorte, State of Indiana, this fifteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-five. Signed by you. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have a representative here, if you want to come forward, absolutely. Please state your name and address for the record.
David Shepherd, twenty-five, thirty, West Founders Parkway, Portage, Indiana, and proud member of the Indiana Association for Adult and Continuing Education. And I stand here humbled by this proclamation, but I think it's important at a time, as we all know, where we're trying to do more with less. We are very successful in adult ed. The unsung heroes of adult ed do work day in, day out passionately and often unnoticed. But let it be known that at this time, where we are doing more with less, we do it with passion, and we will do it every day that we wake. And just so you know how successful your state is, Indiana, out of fifty states, number one in student outcomes, according to Program Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four statistics, the latest ones that we have our hands on at the moment. Work-based enrollments, number one in the nation.
Wow.
Career certifications, number two in the nation. High school equivalency diplomas, number three, number three. So you talk about getting a lot of bang for your buck. To give you an idea, during Twenty-three, Twenty-four Program Year, the state invested just under seventeen million dollars in adult ed. The economic impact was just under seventy-five million dollars. That's a pretty good return on your investment. So for those state and federal dollars we receive, we really work our butts off. And to be recognized like this is very much appreciated. Our work is never done, and you should know that one of your very own, one of your LaPorte slicers, who you may know better as, or some of you as Denise Jesch, I know her better as Denise Esslinger, she is doing LaPorte proud because your very own Denise is our president-elect for the next year, and she is a tireless advocate and the advocacy chair for the Indiana Association for Adult and Continuing Education. And she does you proud. She does you proud, and she is a leader you can be proud of every day. And on that note, Denise is watching, and she says hello. She wishes that she could have been here. She is a wearer of many hats. She happens to be among her hats that she wears. She is the Assistant Director of Warren Township Adult Education in Indianapolis, our advocacy chair, our co-wabe fellow for the State of Indiana. Let's see, what else hasn't she done? She goes on and on, and you should be proud of her. So I know that she desperately wishes she could have been here, but alas, I'm, I've come in her stead. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we would like for you to, we'd like to present you with this proclamation. You know, people can talk, and you guys walk the walk. And I would like to tell you, people in the crowd right now, you have people here on the council that mentor, mentor young people, help adult people, Eric Nelson himself, to make sure people have work and get the proper skills needed to be successful. So it's easy to say it, you've got people in this community that are doing it and giving up of their time. So thank you for all that you are doing and the impact that you've made, not only in LaPorte, but in the State of Indiana. So this is something we're all proud of. Come on forward, council. Come on forward, council.
Right here.
Getting in the back?
I'll take a look.
Come on over.
I have wedges on.
Come on up, come on over.
Tall in the bow.
I have wedges on today, so I'm not terribly sure.
Three, two, one.
We give a round of applause for all of you. Item number eight, accepting of filing of petitions of super voluntary annexation by the City of LaPorte, State of Indiana. I'm sorry, Council President Frankie.
Your Honor, I move to read a petition for voluntary annexation in its entirety for the first and only time.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council President Frankie.
Petition for voluntary annexation into the City of LaPorte, Indiana. The City of LaPorte, here an owner, makes an application to the common council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, for the voluntary annexation of land to the City of LaPorte, Indiana, and for the zoning of that land in center township, LaPorte County, Indiana, and in support of which petition alleges and affirms as follows. Number one, the owner owns one parcel of land, more particularly described in Exhibits A attached here too. Number two, owner desires that this parcel of land be annexed to the City of LaPorte, Indiana by proper ordinance to further allow land owned by the state of Indiana to be annexed so that the Indiana National Guard may obtain city utilities and expand and improve the Indiana National Guard property. Number three, the owners are one hundred percent of the owners of the land sought to be annexed. Number four, the property is east of Ziegler Road and west of State Road Two. Number five, the property tax key numbers are as follows. Exhibit A parcel, four-six dash ten dash zero-three dash two-five-two dash zero-zero-six-point-zero-zero-zero dash zero-four-two, four point six-five acres. Number six, the name and address of the property owners of all the petition sites is City of LaPorte, eight oh-one Michigan Ave, LaPorte, Indiana. Number seven, the acreage of the parcel sought to be annexed is as follows. Exhibit A parcel, four point six-five acres. Number eight, there are zero residents in the proposed annexation area. Number nine, the parcel is currently zoned B two and will remain B two. Number ten, the total number of parcels proposed in this position is one. Number eleven, the following information has been submitted with the petition. Number one, a legal description of each parcel titled as Exhibits A. Number twelve, the signature of all owners of the land within the territory to be annexed. End of petition.
Nick Otis.
Thank you. There's actually two other parcels that are included in this petition. And I don't think that council needs to read them, I'll explain it. The petition that Councilman Frankie read was for the parcel owned by the City of LaPorte. The city actually owns a parcel that is not in the city limits but immediately adjacent to it. And this would be just the petition to start the annexation process for that parcel. There's a second petition, which is for a parcel of land owned by the county. Some of you may have gone to that, the county commissioners meeting a few weeks ago. Thanks to the work of Craig Phillips, his office in getting the, I guess, a new parcel created on behalf of the county to allow this annexation to happen. So that is a seven point zero-four acre parcel east of Ziegler Road. And then the third parcel is the National Guard Armory Parcel that is the subject of this annexation. And that is on State Road Two, it's eight point zero-five-seven acres. And again, I think what brought this all about, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, is the proposed expansion of the Armory, the National Guard, I think over a ten million dollar project that will run utilities to this. So tonight, just, you'd need, just need a motion accepting the petition for these three parcels. The next step, my office and Courtney's office will work together to get the public notice for the annexation hearing, which will happen at the second October meeting, your second October meeting.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Just would like to say, we are excited and thanks to all of you, thanks to the county commissioners for working together to make sure the National Guard does not leave LaPorte. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Otis. Councilman Buchanan, introduction of an ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to read an ordinance in its entirety for the first time.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Attorney Otis, I think if it's okay, I'll skip the coordinates and legal description, which is nearly three pages of pipe locations and, or...
Yes, please do that.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, as enacted August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, which is a part of Chapter eighty-two of the Municipal Code of the City of LaPorte, by amending the official zone map that are a part of the zoning ordinance in order to rezone one parcel of real estate in the City of LaPorte. Whereas the parcel of real estate described below are now zoned under the zone maps as contained in the zoning ordinance of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, which is part of Chapter eighty-two of Municipal Code of City of LaPorte, Indiana, as being used, in used District R one B, single-family residential district. Whereas the City Plan Commission of the City of LaPorte has held a properly advertised public hearing to determine whether or not it will recommend to the common council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, that the parcel described below be placed in a different use, in a different use district. And whereas the City of Plan Commission at this public hearing considered this matter required to be considered by Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash four dash zero, six zero three. And whereas it was the recommendation of the City Plan Commission that the official zone map of the City of LaPorte should be amended so the parcel described above be rezoned by being placed in the zoning districts as described below. And whereas this ordinance would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance of the City of LaPorte as enacted August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, and which is a part of Chapter eighty-two of the Municipal Code of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, and specifically an amendment to the official zone map of the City of the city as included in Article thirty-two of the zoning ordinance of the City of LaPorte. Now, therefore, be it, and is hereby ordained by the common council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, that the following parcel, described parcel of real estate situated in the City of LaPorte, County of, City of LaPorte, County of LaPorte, and State of Indiana, to which attractive land, Section Six Township Thirty-Six North Range Two West Pleasant Township, LaPorte County, Indiana, which is now located in the R one B, single-family residential district, is hereby rezoned, being placed in the R two B Townhouse Residential District. Attractive land in, attractive land in Section Six Township Thirty-Six North Range Two West Pleasant Township, LaPorte County, Indiana, and more particularly described below, which is now located in the R one B, single-family residential district, is hereby rezoned by being placed in the R one D, single-family residential district.
I think that's everything.
There's, yeah. The ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the mayor, publication required by law.
Bert Cook, please come forward.
Good evening to the city council. Bert Cook, Executive Director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. Councilman Buchanan, I didn't think Nick was going to let you off without reading everything for a second. So I've spoken in front of this group and the Redevelopment Commission numerous times. I think by my count, we're going on almost four years of, of work on this particular parcel. And in those previous conversations, I know I've mentioned that there's a lot of steps to the process and we continue to move down that path. And today is another one of those steps. So we have John Kovcheck is online virtually with us, and engineer Charlie Ray is here as well, so I appreciate them being here. If there are aspects of this that I cannot answer for you, we can turn it over to John and Charlie and they can step in and answer some questions as well. I'll also probably stay a little away from, a little bit of the intricacies on the zoning side, as city planner Craig Phillips is here and he does a better job of speaking to that than I do. But I will just give you an overview of the project. So, two of you, Councilman Buchanan and Councilwoman West, were at the Plan Commission meeting last week. The Plan Commission, as was referenced earlier, made a unanimous recommendation to the city council to change the zoning of this parcel, but obviously that decision rests with the city council. This is the property that we call Beechwood Lakes, adjacent to Beechwood Golf Course. We may have started, I guess we started this project with the acceptance of the property, but more recently, we put out a request for interested parties who would develop this in a way that is consistent with what the city wanted to see done there, which we did receive this response. Ultimately, I think at one of your recent meetings, we approved the development agreement, which governed the parameters of what the arrangement looks like between the Redevelopment Commission, the City of LaPorte, and John Kovcheck and his development team on this property. So the next step on this path is to, to complete the rezoning of the property. So as was mentioned in the ordinance, we're going from a zoning, a current zoning of R one B, single-family, to R one D, single-family, and R two B, townhome residential. This aligns with the way the site plan has come together. I think if you think of the parcel from Monroe Street headed towards Beechwood Golf Course, kind of see a step down in zoning if you, if you move forward with this rezoning ordinance. You'll have commercial along Monroe, a commercial zoning, which is townhomes, then your single-family homes within the development, and then the executive-level, single-family homes adjacent to the golf course, and finally, the golf course itself as well. Plan Commission meeting, I think there was good discussion. There was a number of people in attendance at the meeting that asked good questions and I think spurred some good conversation. Some of the questions, and I'll try and reflect those to the best of my ability, but Councilwoman Buchanan, obviously if I miss something, you can jump in as well. There was some concern about the commercial that's located about on Monroe and how that would interact with the townhome development. I credit John. I think after the meeting, he had conversation with some of those individuals and suggested additional meetings where we could talk through, you know, maybe landscaping or how we maximize the, the buffers that are going to exist between those particular uses. There was questions, quite a few questions about the density of the development, which I know is something that you all in the council have been mindful of as well. Actually had the opportunity to read a study just this week on this particular issue. And the premise of this was, and not specific to LaPorte, but in a larger geography, but the premise was that you're going to have to get used to additional density because of the cost of infrastructure, right? That's the major driver to the need for that additional density in this particular area. I think we know better than most that infrastructure is incredibly expensive right now. And to find a way to make a project like this feasible for the private sector can be challenging as well. So I think that was a question that came up numerous times. There were a few people who were there that were neighbors, who had, you know, frankly said they never, the property has been sort of woods for a very long time and they'd like to see it stay that way. Understand that perspective, but that's very limiting when you, when you think of we would never develop any parcel if that were the, the barometer for which we made that decision. I think that's the majority of what was brought up at the meeting. You obviously are hearing this ordinance today, you'll act on it at your next meeting. I'm happy to answer questions if you have them about anything I covered. If not, I can turn it over to Craig first and let him speak to just the path that we took to get to where we are today. And then, of course, if you have questions about the development plan itself, which I know you've, you have seen that, we've seen that numerous times as part of the development agreement, but if you do have those questions, I can turn it over to John or Charlie and I'm sure they'll be willing to answer. Mayor, I know we also have many members from our team here this evening. The plan that you see in front of you, this entire package of a project has been at the department HUD level for a number of months with the city team. And so our teammates, I think, have some good input as well if you, if you have questions about the utility infrastructure, that development plan as well.
Questions for Mr. Cook. Craig Phillips, and I think it's also important, and he did it last time and again, just to share with the number of, whether it's affordable, higher end and everything in between of projects, this is one of a few that are happening in the city of LaPorte.
Yes. So I think as everybody's aware, we have many different residential projects happening around the city of LaPorte at all ends of the spectrum in terms of everything from truly affordable per HUD definitions, to workforce housing, to market rate housing, to some, some recent more high-end product that's being created, and then adding to that as well with this project in terms of the higher-end housing and market rate. So, what I'd like to also add is just to kind of build on what Bert said, the opportunity, when we are, when we're presented with an opportunity to create, you know, kind of a step down, if you will, to provide a better buffer between commercial areas and residential areas, we utilize the kind of the, the next lower zoning district that's available to help kind of step down from that commercial to lower end, lower density residential. And so from a planning standpoint, that's a, that's a good practice to undertake so that we don't have the abrupt change from that commercial to the lower density residential zoning. So that's what we were going for here in terms of the more northern end of the property as you see. We also took into account, just from a site planning standpoint, working with the developer to preserve some of those stands of woodland as part of this development and the layout of the development as well. And Bert just kind of touched on this, it's very expensive to provide for infrastructure for housing. We, as the part of the city team, know that and are learning that more and more every day. But one thing to take into account is that there is a significant segment of the population that is not interested in maintaining large lots in terms of, you know, kind of the way that we used to develop land in the past. I think there's more, there are more people that are more interested in a lower-impact, lower-maintenance type of lifestyle, while still having a home that is the size that they want and, and are looking for in the market. And so this project is one of those projects that does this, and there are a lot of examples of this happening all over the nation. It's a trend that's continuing in a lot of urban areas and the edges of urban areas around the nation. But the idea of smaller lots that still provide that personal space, but just not that, as much of a significant area that have to maintain on that personal property. So that's a trend that, like I said, is happening in other communities and we're now starting to see that in LaPorte as well. So I'm happy to answer any other questions you have, but we're excited about this project and we think that it's a, a new product that will, you know, be a benefit to the community.
Questions for Mr. Phillips.
This, thank you both, I'm sorry, thank you both for the presentation. We heard this at the Plan Commission. We heard some of the citizens' comments, like, like Bert mentioned, and they, they made some, some valuable comments. It, it's not something that we take on the Plan Commission lightly because you're taking a parcel of ground and changing it likely forever. It is tree-filled and, and like Bert alluded to, even, even before where he started, the residents were, the houses were for sale for a couple of years privately. They didn't sell generously, it was donated to the city. The city went through several iterations of what it could, you know, could potentially be. I'm glad we've curbed the plan for Mayor and President Frankie to take both houses as tenants, so I'm glad that's off the table. But the, what we're now looking at is a zone map change to allow a more densely populated area. That was concerning at first, is that, you know, talking to different people in the, in the area, is that what we want or is, is that what we need? So I, I did a little research, there's been no shortage of housing studies that the county, the area, the region has done. And there's, there's a couple of interesting things that stuck out to me that, you know, the, the population may be, have been stagnant, but there's some large corporations, there's some large projects that are happening all around us. So land readiness is something that we need to be prepared for. There's been, another key finding in multiple of the studies is there's been household shifts. We have more single-person residents, we have aging residents. We have predominantly single-family housing, eighty-two percent, and we are missing the middle housing zone, which is, it consists of the duplexes, triplexes. And we are missing the middle housing zone, which is, it consists of the duplexes, triplexes, and so forth. One of the recommendations from the plans were to diversify housing stock, which is expand your middle, missing middle housing. And you can do that through zoning reform, so allowing this type of, type of project. So it helped at least settle my mind in developing this with a more densely populated project to, one, help offset the infrastructure costs to make it happen. And it's certainly facing the need that these studies have told us, you know, we need to be facing, so.
Comments, questions for Mr. Phillips? Mr. Kovcheck, anything to add?
Sorry, I was just getting off of mute. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you for having me on. I apologize, I can't be there in person. I'll certainly be at the, at the next meeting. I am very excited to really put all of our, you know, brain power to work with this project. You know, our in-house land development, engineering, architect team has really, I think, you know, worked alongside the city to create a plan that makes sense. I think that's kind of the summary of the evening and what others have said so far. You know, making sure that there is a good product market fit. And it's a very beautiful piece of land. We're very humble to be, you know, partnering with the city to create enough homes to satisfy the huge housing shortage in the area and also create homes that fit the site. So we appreciate all the work the city has done thus far in, you know, helping us, you know, turn the dream into reality. And we look forward to a very successful development.
Questions for Mr. Kovcheck? Comments? Hearing none, this will now move to the Monday, October 6th, meeting. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Public hearing and introduction of a resolution. Councilwoman Ficus.
Your honor, I move to introduce a resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus.
Resolution for an additional appropriation for the Major Moves Fund, Fund 2244. Whereas, it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the 2025 annual budget. Now therefore, Section 1, be it resolved by the common council of the city of La Porte, La Porte County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Major Moves Construction Fund, 2244-532-441.004 Local Tracks Project. Amount requested, $200,000. Amount approved, $200,000. Major Moves Construction Fund total, $200,000. End of resolution.
This is a resolution, can pass this evening. Mr. Otis.
I do need to have a public hearing on this.
Correct.
Correct?
But if you could explain what...
Oh, sure. This is an appropriation, an additional appropriation for funds that will be used by the city tomorrow. At the Board of Works is a proposed settlement agreement between the city of La Porte and DHS, or commonly known as Spectrum Recycling. The, as I'm sure you are all aware, we have been in some imminent domain litigation with Spectrum for over a year and a half, I believe, at this point. And we've reached a resolution. This was a particularly complex imminent domain proceeding for a couple of reasons. One, for reasons that I, I'm not fully aware of. This was the only parcel, the Spectrum parcels were the only parcels the city was required to use imminent domain on. Indot did the rest of the imminent domain as a part of this Tipton Street overpass project. What made it complicated was valuing the real estate itself, its commercial real estate, and then the relocation costs for this project. The, the city ultimately has reached an agreement, which will hopefully be approved tomorrow, that resolves all of those outstanding issues, and I think very, in a favorable manner on a very complex deal. So these proceeds will be used to make a portion of that payment.
And I do want to thank owner Dave Shaw from Spectrum. We had a long and interesting negotiation, but appreciate his work and his effort. And I think we came to a fair agreement using major moves funds, which is for road development and overpass-type development that I think in the end, this one will save lives because our police, our fire will not be behind, I think, 80-some trains a day and can cross when necessary, as well as the public when they need to get to work. They're not stuck by trains and so forth, and can also on the east side traverse across. So this is a resolution. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry. Before we do that, I would like to open this up to the public. Have a public hearing available to speak? Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? I will open the public comments now. Hearing any comments regarding Spectrum? And this is a part of Major Moves Construction Fund.
This was advertised in the Herald Dispatch on September 5th, 2025, this additional appropriation. I just wanted to note that.
Hearing none. I will now close the public hearing. And I would also like to say the majority of funds are being supplied by the state of Indiana. This was a very fair deal to the city of La Porte, and we're excited to partner. And thanks for all the city of Indiana, or the state of Indiana's work.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Councilman Galloway, introduction of a resolution.
Your honor, I'd like to introduce a resolution in entirety for the only time.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Galloway.
Resolution to transfer funds within the 2025 budgets. Whereas, there are additional monies needed in certain line items in the 2025 budgets in order to pay for essential services and obligations. Now therefore, be it, and it is hereby resolved by the common council of the city of La Porte, Indiana, that the following transfers being made within the following budgets for the year 2025. Transit, 2510-304, from 501 salaries to 505 utility services, $4,000. Park, non-reverting, 2211-803, from 391 other services to 321 communications, $2,000. From 391 other services to 1101.001 lake fest salaries, $2,970.33. From 391 other services to 391.002 lake fest expenses, $13,606. Beechwood, 2204-800, from 111 salaries to 321 communications, $2,300. From 11 salaries to 391 other services, $5,600. From 211 other office supplies to 391 other services, $1,000. From 315 professional services to 231 repairs maintenance, $2,000. From 315 professional services to 361 repairs maintenance, $1,000. End of resolution.
This is a resolution, so it can pass this evening. Courtney Parthoon, Clerk Treasurer.
These were just requests from each, each department, which I sent the letter of direction to council, I believe.
Comments, questions? Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Other business. It has obviously been a difficult week, few weeks for everybody, as we talked about at the beginning of the meeting. I hope that we all, including myself, can do a better job of dealing, addressing conflict, how we talk about projects that we may not agree on, not make it personal. We've seen the hate on social media, and I know, including many of my friends, when things are out there, we've got a couple of individuals that want to separate our community. And, you know, we're available. We're open to sit with these individuals to discuss topics. We all have to set the standard that it can't become personal because we see the hate. We see the hate, and obviously you are aware, the public's now aware of the threat that happened last week. I'll at least say to one of our department heads, I won't include myself in that, but we can all do better. And we don't have to agree, but we're always available to talk, to discuss topics that you're concerned about. And that's why, as you've seen, and I think council members will be there, we'll begin meetings minutes with the mayor this Thursday. The day will change, the hours will change each week, just to try to make it available for everybody. This Thursday from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. here at City Hall, where people can come in and have one-on-one meetings with myself to answer questions, bring up ideas, provide solutions together. But they will be one-on-one, and I look forward to that to make sure your voice is heard. And transparency, we continue to provide. I have my cell phone. I am available 24/7. But sometimes it's nice just to see people face-to-face, to come up with ideas and thoughts together. So with that, also, I just want to remind everybody, and I mentioned this, Sunday was just a phenomenal day in La Porte. We had, as you mentioned, the airport breakfast, packed house. You could then go to the market, Farmed and Forge, where $4,500 was used in SNAP benefits, and it was packed. It was the biggest market of the year so far. And then you could go to St. Joseph Church, where they had tacos, burritos, quesadillas, all for sale. And again, that was packed by the community. And then turn around and go from Clark Park to adult baseball to soccer, going on at Kessling, all literally almost till 10 o'clock at night, to pickleball, going on and packed as well. So people are using what makes our community special, and it's great to see it. We want to continue to promote that in any way we can. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Everybody have a great night. Go Raider Nation.